Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our Thursday, February 18th, 2021 regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll call it order and I ask that we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we get into it, I believe Andy's, or we've got a few things that we would like to move around a little bit. I want to say item 8A, we would like to move up if possible. That's Mr. Slater, Attorney Slater. Then there is, I believe, also 9A, 9B, and 9C. Is that correct?
Yes, if the board would make that change, because we have personnel and the town attorney that's on the clock. If that, if the board would do that, that'd be great.
Okay, does anybody have any problem with moving those things up? And we will put them right after our item 6A. Hearing no objections, then that shall be that. Our next section would then be our public comment. Anyone out there for public comment?
There's no one indicating public comment at this time. If anybody does have a public comment, if you could just write in the chat box your name in that you would like to comment. And there is also an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Are there any public comments at this time? Nothing now.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, our good to know. Andy, do we have anyone for our good to know section?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not. We have a pretty full meeting, but I did not, or did I receive any good to know from any of the selectmen?
Okay, great. Thank you. Our next would be a Hebrew historic properties commission appointment. And I believe that's one. And that's from Elizabeth Gannon. She has been, has requested to be moved up from a alternate member to a regular member of the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission. And so the motion would be moved that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen appoint Elizabeth Gannon as a regular member of the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission for a term to run until December 2024. Opening it up for discussion. Hearing none, I will say that as a liaison to the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission, Elizabeth has been a very active member. And I think this would be a good move for the commission to have her as a regularly, a regular seated member. So if no other further discussion, I'll go across Gail.
I'm unmuted now. Gail says aye.
Okay, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Our next would be moving up and I guess we have Attorney Slater. So.
Good evening.
Item 8A.
So I, I would first like to note that before Mr. Tierney or are we formal enough to call each other first names? What's the ordinary, your ordinary practice, Mr. Chairman?
I believe we can get away with it.
Okay. I know Andy's major concern before the last meeting was to make sure that he got an opinion on several questions that Selectman Collins had raised. And he, Andy was most concerned for time's sake to get my opinion with, with regard to the provisions of purchasing pot, charter and purchasing power with respect to waivers in bidding. And although I knew that was focus, my, I really was striving to answer all of the questions that were raised and getting that answer in. So there were a couple of points substantively, everything I said in my initial letter to you was on the money, but there were a couple, couple of things. So I apologize, Mr. Chair, that I had referenced you as first selectman. That's just a, it's customer, customary, we represent a, I mentioned Canton in Columbia. Our town manager, town administrator forms a government, but they, they refer to their, their the, still have a first selectman, even though it's a town manager form. So I always had trouble in Berlin too, because it's a town manager town, but they call the chairman of their council mayor. So it, it, it's just a function of your charter. So I hadn't appreciated, in fact, I think I introduced you to my children, Dan, as, as first selectman Larson. So I apologize for that. But, and the other thing is I had made an assumption, the vast majority of the commissions and boards that we represent do, do have seconds before, on their motions. And you do in your charter have a provision that says that a particular item has to be considered by the board without need for second. So I had mentioned that, you know, in talking about whether an item can be voted on without being on an agenda. And that was really the only subject I was covering. I did mention in it that if a motion fails for lack of a second or a lack of, of three votes, affirmative votes of the board, it can't be added to the agenda and it can't be discussed. So Andy and Donna talked to me the next day that there might have been, you might, you might have read that to suggest that you have to have a second and that seconds are necessary for motions and they're not. And in fact, the training session that we do, I think the joint meeting that I've done here in Hebrew, but for others and done with Tom Hennick, we actually point out that while it's often customary, even with small boards to use seconds, it's not necessary. And even the Robert, Robert's Rules of Order specifically state in them that there's no need for a second on a motion on a, on a, on a measure. The important measure, the important aspect of that though, I was discussing was whether or not the section of that, that section of the charter does author, does require the board to consider any substantive motion that's made. And I, my opinion is adamantly no. There's really only two alternatives. One alternative is that you read it in context with that section of the charter, which refers that, that the procedure that this board, the section of the charter references procedure. And it says that you must, every two years after the biannual election, you must put a resolution on an agenda for the purposes of adopting a policy, adopting your board policies. And in that same sentence, there's a clause that said that the board must consider any motion that is, is made without, without need for a second. So I, that's part of why I assumed there's a second, but that's really irrelevant for the purposes of my analysis of that section of the charter. So there's really two alternatives to that. One is that it relates only to that measure. Your charter requires a resolution to be on regarding board policy. That will necessarily be on the agenda. It'll, that will be, you know, possible, you know, item one or two, or, you know, it, it will be on that agenda at the first meeting because the charter says it has to be. And then, then the following clause is when that resolution is on the table, the, the, the board is required to act on, on any proposed motion on that resolution. So if a minority member believed that you should not have a policy, or that you should have a policy for seconds, that, that all motion should be seconded. And they make a motion that that be added to the, the resolution, the board would have to take a vote on that. That would be consistent with FOI, because what FOI requires in, in the spirit of open government is that the board adopts at the beginning of the year a regular meeting schedule. So all the members of the public know when those meetings are and can attend. And what they also know is the FOI says that during that kind of meeting and that kind of meeting only, additional items of, an additional agenda item can be added. But it can only be added by a two thirds majority of, of the quorum acting. That's what the FOI sets as the minimum. Your charter requires three affirmative votes on everything except for adjourning meetings and setting the times for meeting. So in, in your case, you would need three affirmative votes to add an agenda item to the record or to the agenda. Now, I, so that is the way I interpret it. And, and I, there's a lot of times you might ask me for an opinion and I would say, you know, it's, there's gray. And I think based on cases, based on the language, based on, you know, my, my experience, this is how I think you should interpret it. And there's other times that I think things are black and white. This happens to be one that I think is absolutely black or white. Because if you were to interpret it to require that the board act on a measure, on a substantive motion that's made, then that is necessarily in violation of the FOI. Because it would be, or it would be ordering you to take up business in an, on a, in a meeting, special meeting or regular meeting, that without requiring a two thirds vote of the majority then acting. So there's one way to interpret it. Yes?
I started to cut you short, but I'm, I'm, I'm not getting lost because I know, I know what the right answer is. There was new business at that meeting. There was not a motion for new business, but that was customary. We had new business all the time by unanimous consent. From now on, we need three, three votes. So for an agenda item, that's true. That's, that's absolutely true. And that's, that follows FOIA. But in terms of motions, once you have an agenda item, a selectman can make a motion without a second.
Absolutely. And I understand that's your policy of all motions.
Okay, so that's, that's all, that's, that's it. I, I read your analysis and you were saying that, that it was, was confused or that it was not, and you write from the charter that the charter contradicted FOIA. It doesn't. So I'm particularly sensitive to this because I believe in tradition. And, you know, are, are people going back, you know, 50, 100 years, put that in the charter. It's unique to, to Hebrew. They believe that was important. So I took it to heart when, when I saw your analysis and it was challenging, a right that I think our forefathers and mothers wanted us to have. And I'm glad that you came back. I talked, as I said in my, my letter, I talked to Tom Hennick and FOIA and he was like, you know, no, it does, there's no contradiction there. So I'm glad that you've come back with that analysis. I appreciate it.
And I can speak to that. I spoke to Mr. Hennick today and I actually emailed my opinion that I sent on Friday, which also clarified the fact that I did not suggest that you had to have seconds on motions. The, the agenda, the point I was making is whether or not you can, whether a motion, if you made a motion tonight, for example, that you wanted to change the town hall hours. And that item cannot be discussed unless three members of the board vote first at it to the agenda. And my understanding was is the matter with the resolution regarding whether or not there should be, you know, a position taken by the board with, with respect to the behavior of, of Donald Trump, that that did not, that was not on the agenda. And so what my opinion says is if it wasn't on the agenda, if the motion is made, it has to be made to add it to the agenda in the first instance. And I can agree with that, except for the fact that we were customarily on this board with new business, adding it unless somebody objected to it, which nobody ever does. And had, had the rules, you know, been, been, you know, I'm not the person that's, that's, you know, I'm not the chairman of the board. And so I'm not, I'm not in charge of this. You know, anybody could have objected and demanded a vote. And, and what I'm advising, and, and Tom actually looked at my letter and, and he said it was spot on. And I'm talking about the one that I sent, and those are his words, with respect to the FOI. The FOI would not allow, it would override a charter with respect to, there are certain things a charter can not follow state statute. There's certain things like the budgeting, the, the fact that you have a town manager and a, a five-member board of selectmen. That's all something you're entitled to do in a charter. But you're not entitled to override FOIA. And FOIA would demand that if it's a new matter, you could ask the board and if, if, if and my advice is, I think, I think the chairman could say with, without objection, and I think that might, you know, is that without objection, by unanimous consent, can that be added to the agenda? And if he does that, that's tantamount to a, a vote by unanimous consent. But there has to be some reflection in, in the, in the record that at least two, in your case, at least three members of the five-member board act, agreed that the matter should be added to the agenda first. And then, and the same thing would happen tonight when we move this agenda item up. The chairman asked, and you get, you know, consent to move the agenda. You generally requires a two thirds vote to make the suggestion and asks, is there consent on it? That's perfectly fine. As long as the minutes would reflect that there was a vote to add it to the agenda, whether by unanimous consent or by, you know, a roll call vote, that has to happen. And if it was the, if the policy of the board that, 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 and that was certainly the, the impression I got in looking at the minutes, is that there was not, if, if there was a, a separate request to add it and there was unanimous consent to do that, then that would be perfectly consistent FOI. So it, the, there, there was a suggestion that there were other aspects of this, of my opinion, that were factually wrong or legally wrong. Are there, I can go through any one of the points and that's really why I'm here. If there, there are questions on that, I certainly hope that the letter you got in the package on Friday was not, but I, I'm here to clarify any questions or, or you can help me understand if I'm, if I misunderstood any of the underlying facts that I gave the opinion to the board about.
No, that's, that's great. I have questions, Mr. Chairman, if, if you'll let me.
Yes, I will.
So this is, this is great. I just, just want to say that sometimes your opinions are misunderstood. And just for example, this idea that selectmen have to say they're always speaking for themselves, even if it's known that they're speaking for themselves. A selectman can, can speak for themselves without having that, that caveat. That's true. Unless, right, okay. So we have this thing now where, where, you know, everybody's afraid to say anything. As, as a selectman, you're, you're, you're elected to represent people. You're afraid to say, you know, what your opinion is without people saying, well, you're speaking for the board. Well, I've never spoken for the board, never been that assumption. And I've been accused of that. And so I'm very sensitive now to that. But, you know, looking at, asking people, you know, do you really have to always say speaking for yourself when it's obvious that you're speaking for yourself? No, you don't. Um, so going to the.
On that point, Selectman Collins, at our, at our training, I suggested it's a good practice because you don't want to, you don't want to have people in, in the public confused in that second. But, but literally every time you speak in the public, having to say I'm speaking for myself. I, I wasn't intending to suggest that. It's just in any instance which a board, you're standing in, in, in front of an official body, something of that nature. And they, you know, a member of your, your sit, stay in front of the well as commission or you're in front of finance or what have you. In that instance, they may not know whether you're speaking for the board or whether you're raising your own opinion. We recommend not just for your board, for, but for any board to do that, but there's going to be many circumstances. You know, you're having a conversation at Ted's, you know, you're certainly not going to say, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking for myself.
On the first selectman thing, it's very important because this government went from a first selectman type of government to a first board of selectman, town manager form. And the chairman of the board has a much different set of responsibilities than a first selectman, which is, has, you know, has power. The, the chairman of the board of, the Hebrew Board of Selectmen is a parliamentary position, except for that they give emergency consent. So so that's, that's important and people don't always understand that.
Well, I certainly do. And I explained earlier that, that we represent several towns that are in this form of government. And because first selectman is a much more common term for the chairperson of a board of selectmen that most charters, even that when they've changed, if they've decided to not call, you're effectively a council, is really what you are. But because first selectmen, or there are boards of selectmen is a common Connecticut term and, and one that a lot of small towns will adopt. Columbia, right next door, they have a charter, they have a, a, a town manager form of government and they have a first selectman. Tom of Canton, same thing. They have a town manager form of government, but they happen to call their chair the first selectman. So I was just in the habit of that most all of, whether they be a, a non-charter town board of selectmen in which a first selectman is a chief executive officer of the town or whether it be a charter town where the person who is the chair of, of the first, of the board could have whatever title the charter gives it. Like I mentioned, Berlin was, they, they decided to call their chair of their council mayor. Most people think of a mayor as something more than a ceremonial position, but in that case it is. So, so I have a full understanding of the form of government in town.
No, I'm, and I'm not, I, I know you do. I'm just saying that in terms of public education, it's really important that you get our terms right. I'm getting to the sewers. I have two questions. The first one is we, so the, the, the Water Pollution Control Board chose a consultant without our consent. And in fact, we hadn't really appointed them as the committee to build the sewer. All that, all that money is, is our taxpayer money, just by the way. None of it's coming from users fees. So that, that, you determined that that should have been, that consultant should have been chosen through competitive bid. It was not. This board gave it a waiver last week, last two weeks ago, and made it, made it effectively our consultant. But it went through a whole process of competitive bid for the actual construction company. And they did not, they were not our consultant at the time. So that was my question was, that was my first question was, is that, is that a, a correct procedure? We didn't, the people of Hebrew did not have a consultant advising at, at the time during that competitive bid.
You have a WPCA. And so the way that the general statutes work is it, all public sewer systems have to, are operated, there's just, there is a chapter of the general statutes and all municipal sewer systems have to operate under that chapter. And that chapter requires the town to designate who will be the water pollution control authority. They used to be called sewer boards or sewer commissions. So if you had a sewer board or sewer commission at the time of an amendment in that statute, I think maybe 15 or 20 years ago, maybe longer. But there was a point in time where the name would automatically change to a water pollution control authority. But you designate who the water pollution control authority is. And when you do that, they have, they have a lot of powers that have been granted under that, under the general statutes. And, and they don't, you know, they're not directed, I mean, I, almost it's, it's similar to board of education. I mean, the, the town certainly has the power to decide how to, how to allocate money to it, but to tell it exactly how it, it provides its education, you can't do. So the same thing, your board of selectmen couldn't order it to establish a certain kind of a user fee. That is something that's within its power. Now, I, I pointed out.
That's different than, than what we have here. And it is, this is, is similar to what we did with the schools in that we own, when we replaced the pipes, we owned the pipes. But we formed a committee to install those pipes because the money was coming from the taxpayers of Hebrew. It was not coming from the users. So, for example, the sewer users, which the water pollution control authority, they control that fund, but this, the, the Hebrew Board of Selectmen controls the construction fund, right?
What I, in my opinion, what I said is that I think that it's subject to your rules and procedures that have been adopted in terms of bidding practice. But you, they are the body that makes decisions with respect to a public sewer. I mean, if they were, if there was land by the town that was owned by the municipality and they wanted to put a, a, some kind of a pumping station on, on link to the town.
You're absolutely right about that. But they did not authorize the bond for this money. They didn't have that power. And so, and I've talked to other people, what the question that I have is, do we have the power to set up or should we, or not should we? Would this, this, the board of selectmen have the authority to set up a separate committee to, to construct the sewers? Because it's, it's, it's coming from taxpayers. It's not coming from users. And we have no representation on that, on that committee.
Well, you can't direct the WPCA what, what to do, but you do have control of your funds. So in, in, in an instance in which you, a particular capital project was going to go on and you, the town in its budget, you know, wanted, you know, to have some strings attached somehow. I, I imagine that could happen. But it is very common that, that money, funds that are managed entirely by a WPCA come from tax, from general taxpayer dollars. With, you know, boroughs sometimes where the entire borough is, has municipal sewer system, then, you know, the money, most of the money is coming in some cases, although I believe that that's not always appropriate. But sometimes it's ad valorem taxes are established for throughout the district. So it's very common that towns will subsidize the WPCA's operations and it is not, you know, it, it is not within its power to direct the WPCA in doing what it does. If it needs your money and it needs your land, you're not going to give it to them unless you, you, you know, have, again, like some kind of string attached. Well, then you can attach some strings, but in turn, that's, that's the location. But being able to form a, a committee to oversee how it is making its decisions is, is not, in my opinion, within, within your power. Your power is with the purse strings and you can, you know, potentially limit, you know, limit the way that, that you are providing the funding that, and how they are going to use the funding or what, you know, oversight you're going to have in terms of dispersing funding, if you wanted to, to get into that, that level of detail.
Okay. I don't want to waste people's time, but I think I disagree with this just because this is, is a unusual situation where users fees are not being used. Usually there is at least some, some users fees that are used in the capital expense. This is entirely coming from, from, from the taxpayers, the 100%. And so I'll take, well, I'll just table the, obviously we're going to go with your, your, your analysis.
I mean, for example, we have, it's just very briefly, I just very, and I, we won't belabor it, but represent the Stanford WPCA. And the Stanford WPCA, it makes its decisions in selecting its consultants and we do the contracts with all its consultants. And it, it, I'm not even, I'm not certain, I know a lot of the funds to the WPCA come through general taxpayer dollars. I'm in, I don't see a distinction if some, some portion of it comes from a user fee or not. I'm not sure Stanford, because I think the, virtually the entire city is, is sewered. I'm not sure they charge a separate sewer fee, but I do know that, that substantial general funds go to it. But they're, the WPCA selects and contracts with its contractors.
Okay. On the urgency powers. I'm glad you clarified that because that's what I thought, you know, the powers come directly from the charter. It's, it was meant to be a temporary authorization from the town manager. He sent from the town, the chairman of the board. It's now being used. It's now been, well, it's been in effect intermittently now for almost a year. What I was saying and what I hoped you would at least look at was that the chairman of the board actually voted against the emergency powers in October, which to me means that they, they were terminated then. I mean, your letter says, well, we have, we have a vote in March where the chairman of the board consents to it. And then in October, he doesn't. So to me, that, that says that there was an intermittent. And then in October he doesn't. So to me that, that says that there was an intermittent, um, stoppage. And it interests me because I think that whole, the whole part of that charter is unconstitutional. I think, you know, it doesn't, does not lay out the powers of the town manager. I think we're using it improperly. And, um, I think it was in effect stopped in October. But it, you know, it's moot now because it's, it's back in effect from last week, last, the, the last meeting. So that, that's what I was making the point on there.
Chairman.
Yes, Peter.
First, I, I want to, uh, I want to recognize, I want to hear from Andy, but I, I guess from John's point to Ken, it, on that matter. We took a vote, but are you suggesting, can that? We wouldn't, we shouldn't have taken a vote as a collective board, because even though the chairman voted against it in October, I do remember, I forget the date. So thank you, John, for the month. I don't remember when, but I remember our chairman voted against it once, um, but we voted as a board. So are you saying that the, we should not have voted on as a board to extend those powers? And it's specific to the chairman and the town manager? Or if Andy, you were going to address that, I'll, if I may, I'll, I'll ask Andy to speak either one, but I want some more information on that. Cause I don't want to think my votes irrelevant, um, because I voted on something, but it sounds like maybe it is in this matter.
It, within the charter, Peter, the, the board of selectmen cannot, doesn't it have anything to do with it? That's, 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 that's really, that's, that's how terrible this is.
We shouldn't have voted on it.
Ours was an advisory vote.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Andy. I mean, I'm missing an Andy too, if I may, if I, if I can ask Andy to comment too in my second. And then I respect the count too. I just need some more information on this.
Uh, do I have the floor, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you do, sir.
So I respectfully disagree, um, with a couple of comments here. Regarding the emergency order that was already signed by the, uh, chairman of the board and myself, the town manager. That vote that was brought up was to extend it and it was just so Ken is clear and can act on it with his opinion. It was voted on and the majority, uh, passed that to extend it. So I don't know if that would, uh, cancel that out or not. That, that night on the agenda that was to vote to extend it, it was signed by the chairman of the board originally and myself. And I, I don't want to speak for Dan. I think he was trying to, you know, whatever he voted in the way John referred to it. So I'm not sure if that cancels it out now that you have the actual facts of what took place that night.
If, if I may also, um, my only reason for voting, because I did believe that we did need to keep that in effect. My only issue with it, and I made it in a statement, was that I wanted to put a timeframe on it. And not just leave it, uh, out there without some sort of a timeframe. And I, I want to say that I, I had suggested that it be kept on for, for a couple of months and then revisit it. We would have to pull the tapes to verify, but I did in fact make that statement that I did believe at the time we did need to extend it. But I was wanting to have some sort of a, of a, a timeframe to bring it back up. As compared to just leave it open ended as to a, a, uh, long-term down the road date.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Gail, please.
I have the same memory as you. As I recall, at the time, I didn't want to just go cop lunch with an extension. That I suggested we revisit the matter in the beginning of December. So your memory is correct in my mind.
And select the kid, Casper, to your, to your point, um, no, you're, you're, the board's decision is not necessary. And it, it is an advisory one, uh, and the, the notion of the emergency powers. And now granted, this pandemic has gone on for a long time and I get that. But the, the notion is that these are things that you can, uh, make a decision without convening the board. So, uh, so the charter recognizes that, you know, let's think it's a different kind of a disaster. Let's say it's the worst hurricane that, that's hit, you know, the state of Connecticut. Um, and you can't even reach people, phones are down, what have you. If the town manager, uh, can get a hold of the chairman and they, they agree. Then they can declare that emergency. So it's in that kind of context. Now granted, the pandemic is different than that. Now, there are times where, you know, one example is the waiver, your bidding policy procedures. They actually give the town manager some authority in the, in the instance of the consultant from the WPCA. To say it'd be a waste of town resources, it would be a waste of time. You know, I, I will authorize wave of bidder process, but it, Tom is not, might not be comfortable with that. And might want to hear from, and, and in fact did present that because your board in that case does have power. You, you do have waiver power and your waiver power is not constrained by specific characteristics. So the town manager wants to make sure and thinks that the board of selectmen should be involved in that decision comes to you. So the, in the same context, the chairman could put this on the agenda to hear from the rest of the board of whether. But it, but if tomorrow, uh, the chairman decides that this, that there's no longer a state of emergency. And he withdraws the consent under your charter, then the emergency powers go away.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, the, the charter does give the board of selectmen powers to enact emergency ordinances. And, um, those order, the, the founders, I'll call it the founders of, of the town of this charter. Were so sensitive to that, that they said that those ordinances would expire after a, a time period. And that you could only do one for two months and then have another one, have the same one for two months after that. And then you could not do it, not have that emergency ordinance. So they were very sensitive to giving powers away from the board and, you know, not having a democratic council. I just want to say, you know, we're going through this. I'm, I was asking, you know, what, 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 what does the town manager need this power for? I didn't really get a satisfactory answer, I have to say. But, you know, we had, we had World War Two in, in the town. And they didn't even enact an emergency or an emergency. We had people going looking for aircraft on the, on those towers, thinking the Japanese were coming or the, the Germans. And there was no emergency there, but here we have a temp, what should have been a temporary emergency powers. For now, almost a year without, without my consent, without consent to the board of selectmen as well. That's, you guys voted for it, I guess, but I don't know. To me, it's, it's got to be unconstitutional.
Well, I, I don't think the constitution, I mean, this is not dealing, uh, let me, let me just point out why. I can see an instance in which a charter, the people who decided to do the charter would put the 60-day limitation on. An ordinance is very powerful. An ordinance demands that people refrain or take action. You're ordering the, the, the people in the town, uh, to do something. The town manager doesn't get that authority in the, when he declares the emergency. Gets to use resources, uh, of the town, um, and, and, you know, mobilize, uh, those sorts of things. And frankly, I wasn't attempting to ask or answer the question and couldn't answer the question of exactly what, uh, what? In what ways the town manager has been exercising his authority under the, those, those emergency powers that are granted. So, uh, if I didn't answer that a question, I didn't attempt to and I can't because I, day to day, I, I don't know what those are.
I, I know Andy had his hand up. Did you want to speak, Andy?
I, I'm not here to contradict, but the powers that were being asked or were laid out in the executive order, they're spelled out. So I don't know why he doesn't, John doesn't think the question got answered. It, it's spelled out in the ordinance. It's to mobilize, call in FEMA, Fed, state agencies if so needed for the pandemic. Or gives me authority without assembling the board of selectmen to close offices, departments due to a health risk. So it's pretty, it's pretty clear. I, I, I don't know why that was ever misunderstood and I apologize if I didn't answer it appropriately.
Yeah, I'm. I'm good. I, you've got my concerns about it and, and hopefully in the next charter revision, they'll, they'll take it up.
Uh, Dan Larson again here. Um, and, and again, we are in unprecedented times. We have had, uh, people on quarantine. We've had people with COVID in our town halls. Many of the town halls in surrounding towns are still closed. I know that I'm now doing a majority of my permits, uh, in all of Eastern Connecticut. There's, I'm trying to think of any town that I can actually walk into. I know a week ago I was able to go into East Hampton, but literally some towns are be open one week and the next week they're closed. Because someone in a department will get COVID or have an exposure and everybody gets quarantined. And, you know, these are unprecedented times with, with this disease. And, uh, we just need to be cognizant of, of everyone's health, not only our, our taxpayers, but also our employees. And, um, what I am, I'm deathly afraid of is if we get COVID. Going through our town hall, conceivably, all of our town hall staff could be out. And to me, that would be devastating for Hebron. Uh, it would be as devastating for Hebron as if the entire board of selectmen, uh, someone were to get COVID. Or we were to, to all get COVID or our board of finance, it, it. I, I just don't think it's worth that risk to, to open up our doors. And, and expose people to that. Without there being a, a really solid reason why to create those types of exposures. And that's, that's just my fears. Um, you know, maybe I get it from being in the fire department and, and, you know. Seeing what happens when all of a sudden, you know, everybody gets the flu. And, you know, you got people trying to fight a fire who are throwing up. It's not real good. I'm sorry.
I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Slater. Um, thank you for coming. It's been, it's, it's been extremely constructive, I think, to get your clear opinions. I, I would say that, um, in the, in the future, um, you're asked for opinions by the town manager. Some of them are legal opinions and some are not. I, I think it would be helpful if you clarify that in your, in your letters, that this is legal, this is not. But otherwise I just want to say thank you. Again, um, all of these, these are important issues, at least to me. And I appreciate your opinions and your expertise.
My pleasure.
Thank you, sir, for, for coming. Thank you very much.
Good night, folks.
Thank you, Ken.
My, my pleasure. Good night. Be well. You safe.
Uh, Andy, our next.
Okay. Well, we're still on, um, that was turning Slater's, um, opinions to those. But the agenda item is still, um. Listed for the rules of procedures and guidelines. So I don't know if we're going to take that up. Gail had made a proposal. I don't know if that's part of this tonight, but we want to finish with that and move forward. See, we have other business to waiting.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? Can we go to what Andy just said?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mark.
And since we're, since this is fresh in our minds right now. I know Gail had come up with a solution for making a resolution to introduce new business. I, I think we should have a procedure for that where you just can't make a resolution at any time during the meeting. That, uh, that it should be at the beginning of the meeting and then we agree to talk about it or we don't agree to talk about it. Instead of just thrust, thrusting it on somebody at any point in the middle of anything that we're discussing. That, that we were to do that. That's, that there's no continuity to that. So, um, is that something we want to address and vote on right now?
But, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Gail, please.
Um, I would, why don't we vote on it and get it over with? All we're doing is saying that the two thirds, three members of the board have to agree to put something on the agenda. And we're just clarifying it in words. So, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That's already there. It's in our rules. It's just wasn't always as, as stated. Anybody in new business can bring up something if the, if the majority, three, three people, you can't get three votes. Then you can't talk about it. Once, once it's on the agenda, then a selectman has the, the, the right. To put forward a motion without a second. That's Robert's rules of order, except modified by the town charter. We need three votes. It's always been there and you just have to enforce it.
But, but nobody's, nobody's arguing that. We all agreed to that. What we're, what we're trying to discuss is. Do we do it during new business? And that's the place to do it. Just for a sense of procedure and order, that you just don't spring it at any time during the meeting. And I can't remember when you did it in the last meeting, John, if you did it near, doing new, new business or later, but everyone felt.
New business, Mark. That's what I did. That's what I did. And I did it at any, any other new business. Yes, I had this. And anybody objected to it and said, you don't have three votes.
So we have, do we have a motion? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we discussed.
I'm sorry, I mean, is there a prepared motion? I'm sorry, Mark. I meant, well, do we? I thought we had prepared, so I thought something was prepared to add this.
There is the, uh, paper. The resolution that Gail had written up. So we can bring this up, we can, uh, read it and then make a motion or, or, or read this as a motion. And then we can vote on it. And then the question would be, at what point would this be done? In other words, would we do this after the pledge of allegiance? And then discuss it under new business, the motion, if it attains the three, uh, yay votes necessary?
All right. So it's not on the agenda. So we just to make sure I'm paying attention here and I got all this because we're covering a lot of ground here. So if, if a motion is going to come forward, we then would have to. Vote as a, as a, as a board that we want to add this to tonight's agenda. Is that, am I correcting that, that interpretation? And if so, then we could, if we get a three vote yay, then we can move forward to, uh, taking a motion and passing that motion specific to. Putting this language on to make sure there's clarity. Andy, you have some, some help for me?
Yes, he does.
I'm here to help all board members. So this is an agenda item.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Under old business, and that's the reason we brought Ken Slater in that for that multiple questions. But this agenda items to add that prepared resolution or motion Gail came up. Two rules or procedure and guidelines, which the selectmen do at the first meeting after an election. So this is to add this for clarity.
So we are prepared to, prepared to vote on it then in terms of it's an agenda item and, and we make the motion and vote on it or not. But hearing to our policy by ultimately, if we decide to move forward and vote on it, we can do that.
Correct. If you, if you say this is on our agenda.
All right. Thank you. Just want to make sure and follow the rules.
Dan, I, I'm still trying to get the timeframe right here because I'm looking at the agenda. And it says in number three additions and changes to the agenda. So that's where this should be brought up, not wait till the second to the last or thing on the agenda during new business. And maybe that's when we, we discuss it, but it should be taking place during number three. Cause it's a change or an addition and we either, either say we're going to talk about it and add it or we don't. We don't wait till number nine, because John, you waited till number nine. You didn't do it at number three.
I did it at any other new business, Mark. And again.
It says addition, John, it says additions and changes to the agenda as number three. That's when it should have been done.
No, no, not according to, excuse me, I have the floor. Thank you. Not according to the Robert's rules of order or the, or the, the rules of this board. And the thing about it.
Why do we have number three as additions and changes to the agenda? But some other rule says you could twirl them in whenever you want. I want consistency of when it's okay to happen. Not this rule is okay, that rule is okay. We need one rule, not three rules describing the same thing.
And, and so the other thing is. And, and so the other thing is, you know, when a agenda item is proposed, if you're not comfortable with, with talking about it, vote against it. That's, that's the point of this board is to discuss things. It's not to prevent discussion, it's to discuss things. If you don't want to discuss it, you got three votes. I got one vote. So.
John, it, John, it's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about when is the proper time to introduce it? So we have consistency in a set of rules that we keep following. Not just Robert's Rule said you could say it anytime, which I don't know if that's true. We have on our agenda saying additions and changes to the agenda. Now, is that correct? And is that the right time to do it? That's the question I'm asking, and that's the discussion that I would like to have.
I believe Dan Larson, and I'm going to ask Andy to, to also weigh in on this, if he would. I believe it should get brought up under additions and changes to the agenda to get the affirmative or not affirmative vote to bring up the topic. What I am not sure of is if it does get the affirmative votes to raise it as a topic. If it would come up under other new business, then at that point of the meeting, or if it would get discussed literally as, as number three. I, I don't know, and I would look towards others' input on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Actually, okay, go ahead, Gail.
I think the, whether or not you're going to add an item to the agenda or change an item should be done where, what we're talking about in item three. But then the item itself, we would have to decide where it fits in the agenda. It might be under other new business. It might be further clarification on old business. But we would need to see where it would fit into the business of the evening.
Okay, Andy, please.
Okay, so apparently I'm going to have to start jumping in a lot more in these meetings because we're dishing around the, the issue.
Yeah.
When, when this first was brought up, when John brought that up, that item three was not on the agenda. So, Mark, he didn't have the chance to bring it up under that. We added that because of what happened at that meeting. What happened at that meeting was a motion was made and voted on, but it wasn't voted on to be added to the agenda. There was correspondence alluding to the vote and how it came out, and it was misinformation put out to the public. The town manager's office got a call. I made my ruling on it. Per the charter, it said it takes three affirmative votes to add something to the agenda. They had a couple of selectmen that were upset at how that went down, and they wanted to make sure that that would not happen again. So we wrote this, and Gail came up with what she's proposing under the town's Board of Selectment rules, procedures, and guidelines. And then we asked an opinion of the town attorney to elaborate on the actual practices. So that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Gail, please.
I think we each have the right to add or to change something on the agenda all the time. What we do need is to know that something is going to happen. So John adding something close to the adjournment of the meeting doesn't give any of us a chance to think about it, to prepare, to say whether we want it on or not. But if we do it in the beginning, then we all have the equal opportunity to say, because when we consider an item, we're the representatives, elected representatives of the townspeople. We want to know that we had, that we're exercising due diligence, that we have the opportunity to prepare before we make a decision. And that's the only reason for, up in front, you put an item. If we can, we can make a decision on it that night. If not, it gets, it goes on the next agenda or wherever would fit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So new agenda items, according to FOIA, you can, you can only put a new agenda item on 24 hours before without, with a two, two thirds vote. I guess, and so that's, okay, so that's true. This one, again, if you want to put another item up, up front and say, you know, any new business has got to be voted on in number three and not number nine. That's fine with me, I, I don't care. You got to get three votes. And, and if you don't want to talk about it, which is what a lot of majority, I mean, I don't want to give power to the Republican majority here. But a lot of time, the majority just say, I don't want to talk about it. And they voted off or they table it. And you have that power to do it either under number nine or under number three. Either way. The other thing is, number nine has been misspelled for months now. New business is missing an S. It's bugged me since, since then.
Okay.
Well, then, so if I may, I'm trying, I'm, I'm hoping that I can call the question here because we see we're all agreeing that there's, there needs to be clarity. Clarity is, is dictated in, in, in what I'm looking at in front of me. And we all seem to be in agreement with it. So can we, I don't exactly how to do this, I don't want to screw it up. But I want to vote and get this and move on to something else.
Okay.
Because we all seem to be in agreement.
I agree. So I'm going to make the motion that on our agenda, that after the Pledge of Allegiance, that there be placed a, an item considered or listed as additions and changes to the agenda. And that those agenda additions and changes, when a member of the Board of Selectmen wishes to add an item to the agenda of a regular meeting, the information shall be shared with the board as soon as possible in advance of the meeting to allow members to properly prepare to represent the community. Under section three of the agenda, the Board of Selectmen shall provide a brief description of the proposed addition. The chair will then pull or poll the selectmen to determine if a majority of the entire board, three members, wishes to add the item. Only then will the item be added to the agenda. Any further discussion?
Sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Can you put the motion in front?
It's on the screen.
It's in red.
Oh, there we are, okay.
That's why it was so hard for me to read it.
And, and Dan.
It was like, oh, this isn't good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, if I could make a recommendation to the whole board that in your motion, you would be adding this to the rules of procedure slash guidelines of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, um, I think, I, I wish, I wish Ken were here because I think that violates FOIA. FOIA requires that you have a two thirds majority to add new things to the agenda if you don't have 24 hours. So.
Well, this is where you've got the three members. So the three members would have to say, yes, they would like it added to the agenda.
Right, but that's only 60%. We need 75, we need 67%.
Okay, because Mr. Slater, Attorney Slater, was saying three, three members of the five member board.
Yeah.
I thought he, he tweaked, I thought he adjusted this. I thought we were looking at a wording that he had viewed. Is that true, Andy? Is this, I thought he looked at this particular wording.
The charter, the charter allows you in other instances to use a different number. But when you're adding stuff, he was clear, at least to me, that it takes three in the affirmative to do that. That's what I heard.
And John, you're saying that it's four?
According, according to FOIA, it's two thirds, and FOIA supersedes the Town Charter. I think that's true. I think that it's two thirds. Where's my, where's my Robert's Rules? Where's my FOIA?
It's my understanding that Mr. Slater had approved this language.
Okay, vote, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay.
There we go, let's go.
Hearing the motion going across, Gail.
I.
Peter.
Peter Casper, I.
Mark.
Mark, I.
John?
John Collins, no.
And myself, Dan Larson, I. So with Andy's friendly amendment, motion carries. Thank you.
Wait a minute, what, Andy can't make an amendment?
No, he, he asked if we would add or, or the, the, I forgot how he worded that. So I'm.
I recommended it to the board to add that you guys have to add that.
Okay.
Us, yeah, just clarification. Doesn't change it, just clarification. Okay, moving on. Our next thing, I guess, would be, I had it written down, nine A, is it? Nine A.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my computer wouldn't cooperate. So it's ninety, it's awarded the bid for the Raymond Brook Bridge Substructure. Attaches the bid submission review letter from Howard Performer of Nathan L. Jacobson. It's with a recommendation to award of the Trail Bridge Substructure for the Raymond Brook Phase Two project to Arborio Corporation. Rich Clarko and Howard Performer will be at the meeting to provide more information and respond to questions. Are you with us, Rich?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Before I let, turn it over to Howard, I just want to let you, this is the award for the abutment of the Raymond Brook Project. We already have awarded the bridge. We had to wait until we awarded the bridge, which the board approved so that Howard could design the actual abutments for this project. We now came in, we are within the budget framework that we have designed, as you can see on the project, which we're very pleased. We had estimated eighty-five and came in at seventy-three. We did have, and Howard go over all the bids and everything with you. So at this point, I'll, I'll turn it over to Howard from Jacobson, and he can go through some of the more details of the project.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Howard Frommer, I'm with Jacobson and Associates. I'll just brief you real quickly, and then I'll let you go ahead and ask any questions that you may have. As Rich pointed out, we went out, go in January to bid out the substructure for this trail bridge. It's a 65 foot long bridge. The substructure is basically the concrete abutments and wing walls. And the winning bid was the Arborio Corporation at $73,000. We had a cluster of bids around eighty-two to eighty-seven thousand. Engineer's estimate was about 85,000. And then we had several outliers that went from 125, 152, and 168,000. So seven bids altogether. We personally have experience with the Arborio Corporation. We've worked with them on two different projects, and they're an excellent contractor. I would have absolutely no reservations whatsoever. And if it was truly up to me to hire them again. We did, however, do our due diligence, you know, went through the bids, obviously, checked a lot of their paperwork, made sure they complied with CHRO, checked any OSHA issues. We looked at some legal issues and passed those on to the town attorney because we're not qualified to do that. Any detailed financials were waived by the town because the bid amount is so small at 73,000, and Arborio will be posting a payment and performance bond. And we did a number of reference checks besides just our own experience with them. The funding agent, as Rich explained to me, does not require any prior authorization to award to them. The only two action items that we have in our bid submission review letter is for the town attorney to evaluate the state of Connecticut Superior Court information that we found and the Supreme and Appellate Court information that we found. And I will say that, again, we're not attorneys. I see something and it says Arborio, or it says one of the names of the owners. I just assume it has something to do with Arborio, and then we call it out, send it to the attorney to take a look at. So perhaps the town has some information, some feedback on that. But other than that, I, I think it's clear that Arborio satisfied the bid requirements. And I, I think there, there should really be no reservation to award to them.
I can speak to that legal issue. We did have the town attorney look into that, and he has written us back that that would not be a reason to not award to Arborio, that legal action pending on one of the owners.
Okay, very good. Um, if it's, if it's this board's decision to award it to Arborio, my plan would be to, I guess, I would send over to Don tomorrow, a notice of award form filled out for Arborio that the town would execute. And then we would go ahead and forward it to Arborio so we can track it, make sure that we get it back in a timely fashion. And that will start the paperwork process to get them on board for construction this summer.
Thank you very, very much, Dan Larson. Couple of questions. Now, this is just for the, the concrete work for the bridge? Or what, how is this process going to move along for this, for the getting of this bridge constructed?
Sure, so it's a 65 foot long span, and the superstructure, the part that you walk on that supports your weight, shall we say? The part that's above the abutments, that's a fiberglass structure. And the town has already awarded that contract to a firm from down south who are in, at this time, in the process of building that, those fiberglass components. The fiberglass components would get shipped to the town. And the town could actually erect that, that superstructure on the brand new abutments. And I believe that's, that's Rich's plan. Each one of those components doesn't weigh more than about eighty-five to 90 pounds. So it's fairly manageable for one or two people. But aside from the superstructure, we need a foundation, if you will, to put the superstructure on. And those are the abutments around the left and right side of the span. Here's an enlargement, the elevation view in the bottom left corner, you can kind of see the, the substructure, the, the abutments. They're about six foot tall overall. Frankly, most of it's in the ground for frost protection. So this contract to Arborio, their responsibility would be to come in and excavate, form up, put the steel in, pour the concrete, backfill with previous material. They will have previously installed some erosion control. In the meantime, they'll go, then they'll go away. And the town will complete construction of the, the trail up to the abutments, remove the erosion control when it's proper, do the vegetation and plantings. And the town's going to hire a crane to set the fiberglass superstructure after the town erects it right on site. So they're going to erect it next to the bridge in the dry on the bank. And then the crane will lift it up and then set it on the brand new abutments.
Just one little just update that Howard outlined very well is that with the crane, what we're able to do with the bridge is the, the, we'll move, the crane will put the bridge in place, but we have not, we will not put the decking on until the bridge is in place. This enabled us to utilize a smaller crane, which saved us funding to be able to do it and be a little more efficient. It was even recommended by the bridge company and Howard working with them. One other thing to note, as Howard pointed out, you know, we're looking at the construction of actually the abutment part to probably occur sometime after Memorial Day, optimistically. Because we have to put in the base of the road of the trail has to be built by us prior to this work getting started. We were able before the weather changed is to do all the tree work and trimming that has been completed before the work started in. And I need to point out that we do have every single permit from the Army Corps to DEP to all the town permits. Howard and along with Tom Fenton worked very hard on this, as well as the Conservation Commission. So just to make sure that all our permits are in place for this project. And this would be the, our last major bid part for the project. And again, this abutment work will be done, the bridge will be delivered after this. And then we will start construction because this, the area where we have for the bridge to be built and the other areas where we worked out, we're planning and zoning conservation are our turnaround zones for the trucks, the cement trucks, and as well as for the crane and the actual downloading of the pallets and stuff for the bridge.
Perfect, it sounds great. Sounds great. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I hear. Peter Casper, and thank you, Howard. That was really a great explanation, a lot of detail. But thank you for providing a very concise overview. It's very helpful, considering there's a lot of, a lot of context here. I'm just curious, from a business perspective, how, how can one company do the job for 73 and someone else wants to do it for 150? Is it because the job? Is it because the job's too small? Because if you had a hundred and fifty for a seventy-three thousand dollar job, you're, you're out of business because no one will ever use you. So I'm just curious as to how you can have pricing that can be that different if the specifications are exactly the same. Do they propose different materials, different process? Or is it just a function of they're not really wanting the business because it's too small? And if they can get a certain price for it, it's worth their energy? I'm just kind of trying to understand this from a business perspective, this is really kind of a head scratcher as to how these bids can be so, so different.
Yeah, I mean, they're all good questions and I think you answered every single one of them. You know, in, in our experience, there's been any number of reasons. High bids, sometimes guys just will throw a bid out there and see what sticks to the wall because they really don't care if they get the job. You know, they're pretty busy, but if they can get it for two times what it's worth, you know, it's a home run. You know, guys that, you know, bid it low, sometimes some of them are unscrupulous and, you know, you gotta watch out for that. This job literally has five or six items of work. I mean, uh, there's, there's just not a lot there. You know, our dealings with Arboreal have been very good, they're, they're a very upstanding firm. You know, maybe they've got a job close by, maybe they've got to keep some guys busy. You know, there's any number of reasons why, you know, you can have such a big range.
Okay, no, I just wanted your perspective because from my perspective, you're, you're within fifteen percent, you're within a sellable difference. Anything else, you're, you're not really truly engaged in the, you know, from my background, not to do with the town. So I'm just trying to learn, uh, because I see a lot of these bids, you know, now and this role and sometimes the pricing is just so, it's hard to understand some of the relative to the job. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay. And I should have read the motion beforehand, I apologize. Move to the Hebron Board of Selectmen Award the bid for the Trail Bridge, uh, Substructure for Raymond Brook Preserve Phase Two Trails to Arboreal Corporation of Cromwell, Connecticut in the amount of seventy-three thousand. Any further discussion? Mark, Don?
Just, yeah, to Peter's point, just quickly, um, is there any, do you have any control over change orders? I mean, if these guys are low bidding and, you know, change order us to death or?
Um, we, we actually built into the contract, we have, um, several unit price items for things that we might think go awry. Like, let's say, although we did have a subsurface investigation and those are only as good as where they actually drill the borings. You know, let's say they find a big rock somewhere big enough that they need to get paid for rock excavation. We have a unit price built into the contract with an estimated quantity that is summed up and is built into that seventy-three thousand dollar low bid. So i- in actuality, if, if several of these unit prices aren't work, the price will come in less than seventy-three thousand dollars. Just, again, addressing the opposite of what your concern is. So, and, you know, there's, there's five, five items here. You know, nobody's perfect, but I'd like to think that this is a pretty small job. There's not a lot of opportunity for change orders. We do have unit prices built into the contract. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to a successful project with them.
And this unit price does make clarification too to you, John, is the same system we utilized when we built Burn Hill Park. And it worked very effectively. As a matter of fact, uh, when that project was done, there was funding that did come back.
Great, thank you.
Sounds like a great project.
Okay.
Thank you.
No other questions? Call for a vote, Gail? You're on mute.
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
I'm Colin Zai.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I forget, I also just wanted to thank the town staff for making of the packets. And I'm hoping everybody was able to, uh, get in and get their copies of the packets. You know, a lot of paper goes in, goes into these packets, a lot of poor trees. Our next would be the, uh, Old Colchester Road Bridge, is that true, Andy?
Yes. Yes, item nine B. And with us, we have Howard again, along with our Public Works Director, Kevin Kelly. I believe Kevin.
Everybody.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. Wanted to talk about the bridge over on Old Colchester Road. Every two years, the D O T comes out and inspects the three bridges that are on the, uh, national inventory. Back in two thousand eighteen, um, they did the inspection. And in two thousand nineteen, when we received it, it was rated at number four, which means, uh, it may meet tolerable limits to be left in place as is. So with that being said, we started planning for the future because the D O T tries to give you plenty of time to plan for bridge construction. Because there's all kinds of permitting involved with Army Corps and D E P and fisheries, et cetera. So we put together a cash flow graph to start thinking ahead about this. And we, with the idea that we were going to apply for some grant funding this year to start thinking ahead for five years out. This year, when we got the report in for the two thousand twenty report, it got downgraded. So it says the code number three for that is basically intolerable, requiring high priority of corrective action. We got another letter just, uh, this week on the sixteenth from D O T. Just reminding of this, that the town is advised to engage the services of a professional engineering firm immediately for bridge number oh-four-six-nine-five, which is rated four. So with that, um, we have two different funding sources that we are looking at. One is called the D M S, um, grant funding that I'm going to let Howard talk to you about. We've presented this to the Board of Finance a couple of weeks ago and got their, um, approval on wanting to commit to fund this for the next five years. So this is the next step is to bring it to the Board of Selectmen. So Howard, do you want to explain these, uh, grant funding, um, procedures for us, please?
Sure, um, first of all, can everybody see my screen here?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, so when we first started, um, considering, considering and developing a cash flow analysis there, as Kevin pointed out, well, there was something called the Federal Local Bridge Program. And there still is that program. And that program basically is such that in a nutshell, the town just has to pay twenty percent of all the costs. State and the federal government pick up eighty percent, uh, of everything, uh, engineering, construction, rights of way, a little contingency and so on and so forth. But since, since we started this cash flow and we've, we've changed this cash flow, you know, over the years since we started, we've sort of tweaking it as we go along. A new program came out that Kevin mentioned called the D M S. It's called, it's designed managed by state. And basically what that is, is instead of the town being responsible for twenty percent of the entire project. They're just responsible for twenty percent of construction related costs and rights of way. So in essence, um, the twenty percent that they were paying of engineering in the federal local bridge program, in the D M S program, that's picked up by the, the state and federal government. So, um, in the D M S program, there's, you know, less out of pocket. I guess the one question would be is how do we know that we can get into the D M S program? So we have a, um, an email chain with the D O T that they feel this bridge is eligible and there's room in the program for it. And what they want us to do is submit a, uh, application, preliminary application to the, the bridge program. And then they will officially consider it and hopefully officially issue a letter to the town with a commitment to fund in the D M S program. I mean, that's, that's the essence of the program. And I can go through the, the nitty gritty of this cash flow, but I'm not so sure that that's entirely important at the moment. I, I think the immediate issue, um, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, is getting permission to submit to the federal local bridge program, excuse me, the D M S program to start the process here.
Yeah, and, uh, this, we're planning on making the application this spring. Using the, it's about three thousand dollars for the application. We're going to take that out of the road budget for the Public Works Department. And if you look at the proposed town C I P under the cash flow, uh, part of this, um, diagram here, it's called, it's for a hundred thousand for the first year. Then seventy thousand, um, can't even read the numbers here.
Eight. Seventy thousand eight forty-eight.
Yeah, for each, uh, year following, um, for the five years. And this projects this to be built, um, in the year, um, twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-six is the year of construction. So this gives us five years to put the money together for this. Questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, so Kevin, you know, you get, we get the letter that says, um, you know, this is poor condition, seems like a, something that needs immediate attention, but now we're five years out. So is that, does poor in five years line up? Or are we somehow gonna have to take action before? It feels like poor means we need to take immediate action, but this, you know, obviously is projecting way out before the construction even starts. So that's one question. And the second question is, since clearly we have to do something, and I may have missed this, so I apologize if I have, if we don't get the grant, how are we paying for this? Because we still have to do the work, right? And so do we need to think about that or is that a board of finance matter or is that not something that I should be worried about?
Well. Repeat the first part of that question again, Peter.
I, I just, when it says poor, it seems like immediate action is required, yet we're starting the project in two thousand twenty-six?
Yeah, you never know what's gonna happen. If all of a sudden it starts washing out underneath the, uh, the culverts on that, it could come to the point where we have to close a portion of that bridge.
Well, you have to close it, okay, we can't start it sooner, I guess that's really my question.
Well, we're trying to fund this ahead of time is what we're trying to do. That happened to us on Marjorie Circle Bridge, we had to close paint on that.
Yeah, I remember that, it was closed, yeah. I just was thinking, it, it just seems like we need to take action sooner and, and we have to go through, you know, the process. And it almost seems like inevitably that we'll have to take some sort of action between now and the construction. And so I just didn't know if it was possible to, to start it sooner. And I, I was, I just don't know how, you know, how the process works. Is it possible to start it sooner or no?
Well.
Want me to answer that?
Go ahead, Howard.
I was just going to add that, um, you know, in, in general, certainly going through the D M S or the federal local bridge program is a long process, there's no question about it. It's, it's a three to five year process, three years at best. When the state comes down, they'll tell you it's three years. We've been doing them for thirty-five years and they're not all three years. You could do it with your own money, obviously the cost would be exorbitant. There's the state local bridge program, which provides a fifty percent grant and, you know, that's a little quicker process. But again, not overnight. To Kevin's point, you know, it's, it's hard to predict the future, certainly. The typical letters, like a letter Kevin just got about, about the town being notified that a structure is poor. I don't want to downplay it, but this is the way the state, you know, lets the town know there's an issue and that they need to begin to, to plan just because these things take so long. The, the issue, and I have a photo up here, I, I hope you guys can all see it. This is one of the inspectors measuring, um, a hole they call perforations in the side of the, uh, metal pipe barrel. There's, there's a whole bunch of these, this is, he's, this is just one, uh, along the water line. This is a, a, a structure that's sixty-five years old and clearly nearing the end of its service life. We see it all the time with these type of structures that don't last that long. Is it going to fail imminently? Because maybe that's part of your concern. That's not typical for soil interaction type structure like this. But the big concern we have is when the water begins to rush through the barrel, it can pull fines from behind the barrel through these perforations and create voids under the road. And that's something that, you know, obviously everybody would be concerned with and, um, you know, we want to, we want to address. If, if something happened that we needed to address early before five years out, um, we've had, had, we have had projects where we've done things like, um, placed a concrete invert and, you know, filled those, those perforations in with the concrete as a temporary repair. Even excavated the road to find voids, which we found and filled those. So, you know, we've had projects where we've had to literally with a surveyor go out every, every week and take survey shots in the gutter in the center line to make sure nothing moved. You know, that, that's sort of been done. I think at this stage, the D O T who normally, um, inspect this every two years, they're going to begin inspecting this every year. And, um, you know, Kevin's, Kevin's, I've discussed with Kevin to have his guys himself pay attention to any signs of distress in the roadway, which, you know, I've seen a lot worse than what you have here. And, um, the distress in the roadway can be visible. I would be surprised if, if you began to see something here that quickly, anything's possible. And if it is, then, you know, we would try to address it with a temporary pair, but the temporary pair also needs permits. So that's part of the, the, the issue we have to get around. It's, it's real tough to convince the state that this is an emergency and maybe an emergency for, for the town. But, I mean, the state's can look at it and say, well, there's a way around and the A D T is only five hundred vehicles per day. They kind of look at, at big picture without a lot of sensitivity to your, your local municipality. So. Good.
To add to that, uh, Peter, this bridge, um, we're projecting it's going to be two million, three hundred thousand to, uh, build. This realizes that most municipalities don't have that kind of money. And that's why they have these programs and that's why they give us so much lead time to put these, our match of the funding together. So I think they're pretty aware of this and, uh, if this shouldn't come through, I know that CROG through, uh, the Transportation Committee also has programs, grant funding programs that handle bridge construction. So we got a few opportunities, but so far this one looks like it's the best.
Oh, it looks great, I just, I appreciate the additional information, I'm just trying to educate myself, so thank you, both.
Thank you, uh, Dan Larson, I had a question. You know, when you were talking concrete, I was wondering with all these new space age types of products that they can inject. Is there any types of products that could be injected into those holes to kind of, uh, support or, or shore up the, uh, metal so that you don't get the wash out of the fines? And then my other question is, uh, what is, i- is there a, an event going on upstream that is creating, uh, shall we say, deteriorating effects in the water, i.e. salt or road, uh, the, uh, processes, winter time road processes? That is affecting the water, that's affecting the metal or unknown?
No, very good questions. As a matter of fact, I was going to say to, um, we do town engineering for Durham as well and, and all the different towns we work in, Durham sticks out to me as having the most problems with this type of structure. And I, I'm thinking it has something to do with farmland, um, you know, or maybe some other industry and what's in the soil. You know, that, I'm not a metallurgist or chemist, but, um, there's definitely a difference I found in Durham than other towns. And maybe all, maybe all of these types of structures in Durham, um, were a thinner metal and had less galvanizing on it. I have no idea. You know, it could be that soils I know in Durham are very sandy, so there's a lot of abrasion when high flows come through, there's that abrasion component. So, you know, as far as injecting something, so, you know, injection is done in all kinds of different scenarios. But one thing you have to remember, when you inject, you gotta displace the air. So if you're going to eject from the hole down below and expect it to move up where and fill the voids, you've got to find an opening for that air to escape. Otherwise you create an air pocket, you don't really get a chance to, to fill the void. You know, you could try and eject it from above, but, you know, is there even a void there yet? Is the void here just so small, it's, you know, maybe no bigger than the size of, of that hole there, who knows? We had, um, we had a culvert similar to this in Durham, they experienced a very high flow. There was a, a pronounced, um, there was actually a hole in the road off in the gutter and the town asked us to come out and take a look at it. There was a void that ran the full length of the barrel all the way under the road. It was probably, we could walk through it practically, it was about five foot high and about three foot wide, it was a pretty dangerous situation. But, but what, what really caused that, besides the, the penetration or the perforations in the steel, was the high, high water. So if there's ever a real high water event, that's the time to pay particular attention. that's the time to pay particular attention and go out here and see what we could detect, perhaps by hammer sounding on the metal or some other non-destructible method. So, yeah, injecting injecting is 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 tough. And as far as addressing chemicals could be, it could be a possibility. But again, maybe the the metals thin and the galvanizing is not adequate. I don't know. Sixty-five years old, so it's not unusual to see something like this. You got a good lifespan out of it.
Then I have one other question. The replacement bridge to this, what will the materials that that is made out of be made out of?
So, first of all, we're we're not, unfortunately, we're not necessarily going to be the design engineer. If when you use federal money, the town will have to go through a QBS process. And you know, we would compete, I assume, and hopefully get selected, but there's no guarantee. If if we were gonna do it, I would imagine that the bridge would be concrete. The DOT has recently come out with some new concrete mixes that are a higher density, have a higher durability. I also see them sometimes that we've done this before, we put a sort of a bridge behind a bridge. So really, the abutments are really never touching the water, except in extreme situations. If you would imagine swimming in the in the brook and approaching the bridge, the channel section will be trapezoidal. And the abutments would sort of be up and back on the bank, if you will. Similar to the Raymond Brook Preserve Bridge we were just looking at, where the abutments were back from the water. So they're not in the water from day to day. So that, you know, that's that's one possibility. Personally, go ahead.
Isn't this DMS program, doesn't the state provide a lot of the design on that bridge?
Yes, in the DMS program, the state provides all the design and the the town doesn't pay for any of the design. So that's why I'm saying if we did it, this is what I would imagine. So I don't know what your engineer that gets hired here would do, but I would imagine it would be concrete. I mean, for most projects, we wouldn't recommend steel to municipalities wherever we can avoid it, just because it it can become a maintenance issue. Coatings and deterioration, the concrete's much more durable if done properly.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll read the resolution. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorized Andrew J. Attorney, Town Manager, to submit grant applications for the funding for the Connecticut Department of Transportation Federal Local Bridge Program, FLVP, and the Connecticut Department of Transportation Design Managed by State Program, DMS, for the reconstruction of the Old Colchester Road Bridge. And that's bridge number zero four six nine five. And further be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen commit to funding the town's share of the budget for the bridge project. Any further discussion? Hearing, John?
No, not for me.
Okay, hearing none. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard and Kevin.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, next, if the board is ready, is item C. And this is a considered Kerma's rate stabilization agreement for 2021 through 2024. We did this a couple of times in the past, and this year it's up for renewal. And whether we have Carol Fitzsimons, thank you, Carol, for patiently waiting through the agenda. I tried to move you up as best I could. But with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. As Andy had said, that what we what we are proposing is an extension on the liability auto property rate stabilization program that's in place right now. For those that may not know what it is, this is a program where we, well, there's a copy of it right there. This is a program where we're basically saying this is where the max or the cap will be on your rate or your premium on the liability auto property. It could go down, but it would be the cap. So it ends up being to your advantage from a budgetary standpoint, because you know exactly where you're gonna, the monies would potentially have to be. Now, with that being said, I took a look at what we've done over the last six years with this with this type of a program. And when I looked at all of those six years, this year is one of them. We have actually gone lower than the agreed amount in the in the agreement than has been proposed. So when we proposed something would have been a max of 5%, we went one year at negative 7.5. And that we also did four years, three years of actually flat, no change at all. So when I look at this over all of these years, Hebron's liability auto property has been basically pretty darn close to flat for six years. The only changes have been minor, and they might have been from an exposure standpoint. So it is to your advantage to do it this way. The other piece that I wanted to just point out is Hebron has received back from Kerma in member equity distribution over the last, since we started this in 2012, So it is also another advantage on the Kerma side, and once again, keeping the stability. Our whole idea is to keep it as stable as possible. We know budgets are tight. I've just listened to you having some very expensive projects that are about to be undertaken, and I know the times are tight. So the the what we gave out today or presented to Andy and would be this year for the 2122, this upcoming renewal, the lap would be flat. Any any increase in premium would be because it would be exposure. You've added some vehicles, you've added some equipment, something along those lines. But the the rate is going to be flat. The outline years would be a cap of 5% each year. And that would be more of, we're hedging our bets. The market, the insurance market from a property and casualty standpoint is getting, shall we say, tighter and tighter, and the reinsurance is getting more and more expensive. And I think, Peter, you have some insurance background, so you've seen reinsurance, and we don't know what's gonna happen. I'm I'm watching all of these things going on in Texas. And in my head, I'm thinking, how many buildings have just now have broken water pipes that we don't even know about yet? So we'll just add that to all the property problems that are coming up more and more. So that 5% is is basically hedging our bet, not knowing what our expenses are going to be. Or if there happens to be something that happened bad, a bad loss to Hebron. But once again, looking at it over six years, four of the years were less than what we had even projected out, all of them. And so really looking at it in the long run, it's to your advantage. Does anybody have any questions? Some of you might have heard this. We talked about this in the past. Others, it might be brand new. Peter?
And I have a question for Carol. Yeah, thank you. First of all, yeah, I do have an insurance background. Unfortunately, thirty-some odd years have passed with me being in in the business. I told my father I would never be in. So anyway, the you're right about the market and the ability to lock something in long term and to work with an insurance specialist is absolutely an advantage. So but my question is, we're trying to better understand, there's references to obligations associated with risk management practices and things that you expect the town to undertake. And being a, you know, certified risk manager, that's something that I'm very interested in, and it wasn't really defined. So is there an expectation of things that we must be doing as a town to improve our risk management practices? I saw a couple of references, references to it in the document.
Kerma has an unbelievable wealth of training tools and risk management tools that are at your exposure. Donna asks me, and Andy asks me questions on a regular basis, what can I do to improve this? What can I do to assist on some fashion? From that risk management piece, yeah, it is a little, shall we say, a little more nebulous, because every member is going to be different. And so what we look at it more from the standpoint, if we saw a continuation of problems going up with losses nonstop, and we go back to you saying, you need to do something about. And here are the tools that we have to help you with, and you do nothing about it. That's when we could do something. But in all the years of dealing with Hebron, and really in this program that we've had, Kerma has had for a number of years, all of my members, I've never had one blowout because of that. They've never been taken off the program, because when you're coming in with Kerma, we're we're also saying that this is a partnership, we're trying to work at this together. And so we're also only offering it to members or, I should say, towns, boards of ed, where we know they're gonna work as a partner versus, I don't care what's going on, and I'm not gonna pay attention to whatever you tell me. So those are ones that don't get a rate lock. They're not the ones that are gonna say, let's be proud. Does that help?
Yeah, it it does. I understand that. I just, you know, I I'm just interested in understanding what we're doing on the risk management side, so that that I can, you know, ask Andy offline. I just, when I saw that, as you said, a little vague on that, I just was trying to make sure I understand, understood if there was certain obligations that we need to be sensitive to, to make sure that we ensure the ability to continue to take advantage of this sort of structure going forward.
Sure.
So that was all. So thank you.
Yeah, for one of the things, Peter, in the event that there happened to be, we'll give an example. In the event there happened to be a horrible loss, okay, could be a terrible loss. And our risk managers and our claims people would come in and say, you know what? You need to do this in order to go forward. We would bring in people to assist. We know some things take a long time to fix. So we know sometimes it's changing mindset. So it 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 is a difficult thing to say, you must do this, because every single member is gonna look at it differently as to what their needs are at any point in time. One year it could be great, and one year it's like, oh, boy, we better start addressing this particular item.
So there's not outstanding risk management initiatives that we're working on? It's really just the ability for us to effectively respond in the event that there's risk management techniques and recommendations and things that you would bring forward. But do we have an outstanding list of things that, again, we don't have to cover now, but are there outstanding lists of things that we are implementing at your recommendation over the last couple of years? Or is that just sort of a forward view?
You're up to date. Let's go to this, you're up to date. The only things that would be coming up would be ones that would be OSHA related, that you have to be able to meet guidelines, and that would be more from a state standpoint. And we have those training tools where you have to be able to meet certain training guidelines and the same way from there's training on sexual harassment and things of that nature that have to be done on a regular basis and things of that nature. Those tools are there at your disposal, and your folks and others come to us saying, when can we help? Can you get us on board? So we're kind of tracking what what's happening, but I don't see any major outstanding item right now, Peter, that that needs to be addressed.
Hey, sorry, one more question, then I'll stop asking these questions, and I apologize. Just, so are there are there any recommendations that you would make that would allow us to consider lower premiums by taking more risk on in terms of how we think about deductible management? I don't know exactly how the program is structured, but how we think about that? Is there are there things that we can consider in the future that may allow us to take more risk, but in effect garner more savings over time?
We've we've talked at times, and you're absolutely right, there could be deductibles that could be increased. And then you'd have to be able to weigh out, is it going to be worth? If we say, we all of a sudden are taking this property to deductible, the $50,000, are we taking a law enforcement deductible or school leaders liability a deductible to a much higher level? Will it balance out in the end? And we would have to take a look, Peter, I would look through all the losses and just say, does it make, does it really make any sense? And from a rating standpoint. I think at times we have talked about it, and I think Andy Property was one of the ones that we talked about over the years, saying, maybe we need to look at something a little bit differently, but we can do it on a cost basis as far as taking look, let's take a look and see. You've had loss wise, sometimes your losses are really big, and then and then small ones of nothing. And that's what you would know, Peter, that's a tough one to try and judge. When you're like, it's it's not something that happens all the time, which is really a good thing for the town of Hebron.
It is good. Having a having a frequency problem is is a problem, and severity is.
Severity is severity. Frequency is frequency is something we can help with risk management.
Frequency is risk management, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, no problem. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you very, very much.
My pleasure. And Donna and Andy will let me know if you folks agree to it, and if it is terrific, we'll put it in place. And we'll continue to go forward. And we, once again, we want to thank Hebron. Oh, you've been a great member with us. You're very cooperative. Every time we ask for for information or we have an idea, Andy and Donna jump right on it, and I think that's terrific. So all of your staff have been a great team to work with. So we greatly appreciate that, at least I appreciate that. I don't see Donna's face, but Donna, you know, I really appreciate that. And I have bugged her one, one week. I was bugging her every single day on something, and I think she was really getting tired of me. And I promised I wasn't gonna bug her anymore.
I'm here, Carol, and we appreciate everything you've and all the guidance.
No problem at all. So with that, you have a big evening. You have a lot of other things on your plate. So I will say.
Do the motion right now, so. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Oppose the motion, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen authorize Andrew J. Attorney, Town Manager, to enter into the letter of commitment for Budget Stabilization Program between the Connecticut Interlocal Risk Management Agency, Kerma, and the Town of Hebron and Hebron Board of Education effective seven one 2021, 2022 through the two, seven one 2023, 2024 years as presented. Any further discussion? Yes, Mark? No, okay. Hearing none. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you again.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Good night.
Very much, Carol. Good night.
Okay, going back now on our agenda, we'll go back to the Town Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be brief. We have a lot of stuff on the agenda here tonight. So of course, it's no secret, we've been working on the town's budget all week with the department heads. We're finalizing that, and we'll be putting that together all next week so we can present it the following week. I've been working with the Building Committee on the library roof and closing out the HVAC project at the Douglas Library again. Working with the fire chief and some of the chief officers to finalize the per diems that will finally be coming on board. We're getting them on board as we speak, paperwork in as employees. I'm also going to be in negotiations with all of the unions. Those contracts are all opening up. We put them together, so they're not staggered. Working with the Parks and Rec Department now that Rich is part time. Had to go up there and meet with the crew and make sure they understand this is a temporary situation, so we hire the new director on the first of the fiscal year. And then, of course, it's on the agenda, and we had a COVID at Ram, where people could come, the elderly, 65-year-old could come to get their shots. It was very successful. We administered 202 vaccines. So I have some compliments from Russ Melman, the director, saying it was the smoothest clinic they've run thus far, and hoping we can do more. So I worked very hard to get that established and done in town for our seniors, and I think it it prevailed. So that was a lot of help from the staff, Chatham Health, Senior Center. And then, of course, we put out that that emergency number to get these people registered. It worked well together. The town came together for their seniors, so I think that deserves some recognition. And then I'm also, as the Chair- And then I'm also, as the Chairman of the Health District, compiling that budget, we'll be finalizing that next week. So I'm working on that. I don't know if there's any questions.
Oh, doesn't look like any. Okay. Next would then be.
I believe AD.
I was going to, the update on the COVID long-term recovery.
Right, so once again, I just told you what we did. What's next is we're going to be looking to open the library. We sent the proposal. I got a letter from the librarian that went to the Board of Trustees. And we sent it over to Chatham Health for approval. They have approved that. So we're going to be moving forward, and we'll be reporting when we're going to be opening up the library with safety constraints so people can use the computers for both registration for COVID-19 and then also tax preparation and tax help.
Okay. I would assume then that, that there's going to be disinfecting between the users of the computers and all of that? That must be all in place then?
That is the direction of the Health District that came back. And we had a standard in place when we were open before. He said, as long as we go back to that standard and do exactly what you just mentioned, we should be okay. I can defer to Mark. I think Mark might have some information about the schools and their process coming up of when they're going to start going back.
Yeah, I'll do that during the Ram, my Ram report.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, what are we now as a state? Are we down to like 2.58%?
I believe we're lower than that.
Are we?
I believe we're lower than that.
Yeah, I do know, though. I was reading, and I get it from the Commission on Fire Prevention and Control, the number of positives that they're getting is still, it's still a large number. So I don't know. I would, I would hope that maybe at our next meeting, we can actually see where the town sits with possibly reopening. I don't know. It's, it's definitely something that hopefully can be started to be broached. Although I do know, as I say, a lot of surrounding towns are still closed because I have to drop permits off in mailboxes and drop boxes and do them online and make phone calls and. Definitely.
Yeah, we look at that, I look at that every week. And I deal with the Health District, as you well know. And I do the same survey, all the towns in the Health District, what they're doing. You're right, East Hampton is open, but we had Dory check with the other ones this week. And the other ones are what they're doing is similar to us, but they have bigger foyers where they have, by appointment only, you can come in the building, sit in the foyer, and they'll come out, one person will come out and meet and deal with what your needs are. We're kind of doing that through the door, drop it in the box. We take care, we process it, bring it back out to them, whether it's in the car or the weather's nice, they can come up to the door. But we work with the Health District, and as long as we can do it in a safe manner and keep our employees safe at the same time. It's kind of a tight building, but we're looking to, when we can do it safely, we want to reopen as well. So I'll, we'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you. Okay. Next would be.
CAP budget, I believe, right?
Yes.
So you know this is a fluid document, but per the charter, we have to get this to you. It's time-sensitive. So the Capital Improvement Plan, CAP Policy Timeline includes the following. So it's a 2021 CAP budget. The Capital Improvement Plan Policy Timeline includes the following. The list of the CAP projects will be recommended by the Town Manager and reviewed by the Board of Selectmen by February 15th of each year. The final list of the recommendation projects, sorry, the recommended projects and revised five-year plan will be finalized by March 1st of each year. CAP policy is attached. Attached is the Town Manager's recommendation for the 21, 22 fiscal year. The CAP budget, 75,000 and over, totals 854,143. Capital project budgets, 10,000 through 74,999 of 152,022. General government contribution to CAP is recommended at 749,577. The Board should finalize the CAP budget proposal at the, at this meeting to be incorporated into the Town Manager's recommended budget.
Anybody want a discussion on anything?
I can just give you a preview of, I think everybody knows what you're looking at, but it lists what was approved, the total request, approved appropriation. Then it's 2021 approved. And then it shows what the Town Manager from the department requests I'm asking to be moved forward for consideration. And then in the blue, it shows the requests.
I mean, it's all pretty straightforward. We have our ongoing roads resurfacing, which we were explained to why that's in our CAP every year due to the batching state funds. Does anybody have any questions on any of the items?
Only later.
Like I said, it's a fluid document. And it was time-sensitive.
So at this point, is there anything that you need from us tonight then on this?
Well, it just says the Board should finalize the CAP budget proposal at the meeting to be incorporated in the Town Manager's recommended budget. So I want to be clear on what you're doing tonight. Not approving this, you're approving that I add this seat into the budget that's going to be proposed in two weeks. It's still open for discussion by both Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance.
Andy, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Am I missing the police cruiser here?
The police cruiser that you're getting is funded for this year. It's not in next year's budget, and the police didn't put in a new cruiser for next year.
So, so are we getting one so we don't have to drive the wetlands car around anymore?
You're getting, you're getting a new one that's due to come in in the next month or two. There wasn't a new request for another one in the next year's budget from the police.
That's something we ought to consider because I guess when we get the new one in, that replaces us having to use the old wetlands commission car. And then we have the white one to address. So was that an oversight on the last trooper's part? Or we're going to have to wait another year on that?
I believe it's not an oversight. I could check, but I was pretty sure that they were going to wait a year. They were going to get the new one and then put one in for the following budget, but not next budget.
And then so nurse the white-crowned vic another year then? And then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks, Andy.
So trying to word this out, make a motion that we include in the budget the Town Manager's recommendation for the fiscal year 2021, 2022, CAP budget of $958,143. The capital projects budget of $152,022. And the general government contribution to CAP recommended at $849,577 to be finalized later within the budget process for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Does that sound adequate?
Mr. Chairman, I'll vote for this just as a draft as it's presented by the Town Manager as a time-sensitive proposal to be put in the budget and discussed during budget time.
You are correct, John, and thank you. This is, yes, you are correct. This is to bring it forward, to be able to be discussed during the budget negotiations. So, thank you. Okay, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John?
John Collins, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dale Larson, aye. I'll keep that out. Okay, next would be the budget, any other old business? I don't believe there is any that I can think of. So with that, we'll move into new business. The next item to discuss would be the 2021, 2022 Budget Review Schedule. And again, that was in our packets. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Budget Review Schedule as presented. And that would be Tuesday, March 2nd. And we're going to be starting those at 7:30.
We can start them wherever you want. I think it's imperative that you also point out that we're proposing due to the COVID-19 that the meetings, all the candidates, we have virtual format. And then we're proposing an in-person referendum on the budget itself. But as far as the timing goes, Donna, what do we have the time for those?
That first one should be 7 o'clock.
Yeah, that's why it's listed at 7:30, Dan. We're going to, we can change that.
It should be 7 o'clock. Sorry about that.
Nope, not a problem. I just, I see that, and I just wanted to get a clarification. So it would be amended that it would be Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021, 7 o'clock to 9:30. And these are all virtual, except for the actual referendum vote. We are not doing any board, any budget workshops on Thursday, March 4th. That's our regular Board of Selectmen's meeting. Our next budget workshop with the Board of Finance would be Tuesday, March 9th, 7 to 9:30. Tuesday, March 16th, 7 to 9:30. Again, our Thursday, March 18th is our regular Board of Selectmen's meeting, not budget workshop. Tuesday, March 23rd, 7 to 9:30 would be the virtual budget workshop. Tuesday, March 30th. It'd be the snow date. So does anybody have any issues? See. I'm just trying to follow suit here.
Can we go back to March 4th, please?
Uh, yes, that's a Board of Selectmen's meeting, not.
It's at 7:30. It should be 7 o'clock.
Yep. Good catch. Good catch. And then after that, after our potential snow date, which may or may not be needed, we would then have the the Budget Public Hearing at Ram. And that is planned on being in person? It looks like.
Right now, we can propose that right now, and we'll see where we stand with the requirements. But it looks like they're going to open them up a little bit.
I can clarify that, at least for the schedule right now. All of the Town of Hebron Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen meetings, including the public hearings, are virtual. We don't, that is the Ram Public Hearing for the Ram Budget. And they're, we haven't heard back from them on whether those are in-person or virtual meetings. But all of our meetings are, at this point, planned to be virtual unless you decide otherwise.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you very, very, yes, thank you very much. And then there would be April 6th, which would be the Board of Finance Budget Workshop. April 13th would be the Board of Finance Public Hearing and the budget and the Board of Finance meeting to set the budget. Then they're showing a May 3rd Ram Budget District Meeting. And then the referendum, which would be, as I stated before, in person on May 4th. Does anybody have any problems with any of those dates?
Hard to tell so far in advance, but.
Well, exactly. I mean, but we have to have, we have to have some sort of a schedule. It's getting printed so that it can get out. You know, and then, of course, we always have the issues of snow. You know, things running longer, you know, deliberations. But at least it gives us a, a schedule that can get printed so that people who are interested can tune in and, you know, take part in, in, listen to what, you know, the town's money's going towards. And it'll be interesting to see if we get more visitors, if you will, watching us on the, on the virtual sites as compared to the numbers of people that we actually get to our budget hearings. You know? I, I'm, I'd be interested in knowing if we actually get more people tuning in because they can, you know, without having to leave their homes, go out in bad weather, pack the kids up or, or whatever. So it'll be interesting. So does anybody have any problems with those dates? Hearing none. Not sure if we have to vote on it, but we will. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
There is a motion in here. Should we read it first, though?
That's what I was going to say, yes.
I believe he read the motion already.
He did, huh?
Yes.
Donna says so, it happened, okay. Gail Richmond, aye.
Oh, you know what? I bet you on the first page. I bet I did. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the fiscal year 2021, 22 Budget Review Schedule as presented. But we amended that first, the first day to have our start period at 7:00. And then you caught the Board of Selectmen's meeting for 7:00.
Yeah.
So I guess we did. So again, all in favor? Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
John? John? Okay, Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dale Larson, aye. Our draft agenda. Our next item. And again, you know, additions, changes to the agenda, whatever. Get it in a timely manner. I think our old business, we already took care of. The Board of Selectmen rules to per. I think our old business, we already took care of, the Board of Selectmen Rules and Procedures Guidelines. So that should not need to be on there. Anybody have anything else at this point or not? Well, again, if you have, if you come up with something, make sure it comes in or gets in in a timely manner. Our next item would be our consent agenda. And this here is the motion is move the Board of Selectmen to approve the following consent agenda items. And motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And the first would be the approval of the minutes of February 4th, the 2021, the regular meeting, and then the tax refunds as listed. I don't know if they, does anybody have anything, Gail, on the minutes?
No, not this time.
Okay, the only thing, and, and I'll, I'll let, leave it up to the people whether. But under the assessors report on the grand list, after the second paragraph. I, I remembered stating that these programs, while allowed by the state. I wrote it up. Never have any of the state's dollars to assist in their implementation. And I remember, you know, bringing that up. Where they offer all these things that we can do for our seniors, for our veterans, you know, for all these other, you know, very important people and very important worthwhile purposes. But there's never any money from the state to go along with it. So it always adversely affects, you know, the rest of our taxpayers individually. I just kind of thought it was important to get that in there as a correction or as, as an addition.
Yeah.
You know, it's. So with that modification. Again, move, Gail?
Yeah, which man I.
Peter?
Peter Casper, I.
John?
John Collins, I.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
And myself, I. Our next would be our liaison reports. And going down the list, Mark?
Got to follow up on what Andy was talking about RAM and the return to school. March 1st, we're going back on Wednesdays. So students will alternate three days on, one week and two days, and then the following week switch. And we reconvene the back to school committee. So there's been a lot of pressure to go back completely full-time. So I don't know where that's gonna go because there's a lot of debate both ways. Right now, on a daily basis, there's a hundred and ninety students that are kept home from school during virtual. That's, that's between twenty and twenty-five percent of the high school. So I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I know it's gonna be contentious and Superintendent Leslie is under a lot of pressure with this. And I imagine the board at some point is gonna have to approve what Scott Leslie recommends and a survey is gonna be sent out, I believe, within the next month or so. That concludes that.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, of me?
Yeah. I, you, you hear in the, in the press and all, they talk about. Has anything been done, you know, from the governor's side of this to get teachers vaccinated? And I understand that, you know, the vaccinations doesn't mean that you cannot get it or cannot transmit it. But it does lessen the chances and it's supposed to improve your chances of having a satisfactory recovery from this. It's been in the news about, you know, teachers and where they are. Has, has anybody heard? Are they gonna finally move forward and get teachers vaccinated?
There's not an exact date. They're saying maybe by, because the, the vaccination dispersal is not something predictable at this point, no matter what you hear about on the news. So as you probably know, Dan, the, the teachers were scheduled to get vaccinated. They had already signed up on the CDC website. And then the governor, you know, right or wrong, but in the interest of, of vaccinating senior citizens, pushed the teachers back and started vaccinating more senior citizens. So that's what's happened. So there's no clear-cut date of when the teachers are gonna be vaccinated. And that's causing them a lot of anxiety because if they go back full-time, they're, they're gonna be exposed. I know, uh, I lost my Hartford Police Partner to COVID. And I just went to my third funeral of a Hartford cop. So mom who passed away was taking care of the kids. So I know you go for a little while with it out affecting you and it gets out of your head for a little while, but then, you know, when it hits you close to home, you, you think about taking these risks and you really don't want to. So I know some teachers have lost their parents and other faculty members, support members at RAM. So it's gonna be tough, Dan. It really is gonna be for everybody.
I just, yeah, I, I. You're looking at essential people and, you know, literally one teacher can, can literally, if they get COVID or, or with exposures, you can knock out just huge numbers of people. It, it just, I don't know. I'm, I'll shut up. I'm sorry.
No, no, just last comment. If, if we go back full-time, there's, there's four hundred students at a time in the cafeteria. That's doesn't seem manageable. And then you don't have your mask on because you're eating. So that's, everybody's really concerned about that. They do a pretty good job with, with the classrooms and kids wearing masks in the classrooms. But, you know, when students get out there away from supervision, the, the masks come down a little bit and things get a little lax. But hey, you can't make everything perfect, Dan. You just give it your best shot.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment. I'm sixty-two and high-risk probably. I don't know if I am. I probably am. So I'll be next on the list. Tell the governor, please, shout out to the governor, please do the teachers first. I don't, I don't need it. I'm good.
Appreciate that, John.
Okay, thank you. Gail?
Okay, I don't have too much today, but Douglas Library to go on what Andy said before. The library at the Board of Trustees meeting last time, we approved reopening the library on the schedule they were on back in November, and that will be next Monday, February 22nd. I want to urge everyone to pay attention to the programs, the webinar programs. Last week I went, I attended one on Black Lives in Connecticut after Amistad. Senior Center, well, as Andy told you, the was very well and very well-run vaccination program. Few people told me how much they appreciated it. And I'll remind everyone that the meal pickup program, if you sign up for it, is still available. The Hebrew Board of Ed. Something to note, the, in September, or well, maybe the end of August, the new school year, twenty-one, twenty-two. The kindergarten class will have many new students and it'll be larger than it has been in a few years. That's it.
Thank you. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both the boards that I'm a liaison to have not met since our last meeting, so I do not have an updated. Did check with Chairman Bessie, Board of Finance, and he has nothing that he wishes me to add either. So I am, that's what I, I don't have an update.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, Economic Development is next week, land acquisitions in two weeks, and racial justice, we meet every week. I want to, you know, the people are just fabulous. They're spending a lot of time. One thing I just want to say, we did a survey of the community. It has tremendous value. I mean, we had two hundred and thirty-two responses. It's gonna yield a lot of great data on people's attitudes. And so putting all that together is, is a lot of work. We also got, I want to thank the teachers and the Board of Education. We got responses back from thirty percent of the elementary school teachers. Many of them are, do not live in town. And so one of the questions, you know, one of the questions we had in the committee was, what do other people think? What do people outside of town think of Hebron? You know, why would they come here, not come here? We know why people come here, you know, live here now. We have a really good handle on that because of the survey. But the, the teachers have given us a really good glimpse into that. And so again, thank you to the superintendent and to Heather Pettit, the chairman of the board, and to all the teachers that participated. That's it.
Okay, great. And Fire Department did not meet, they'll but the auxiliary is gonna be meeting, literally, I want to say next week, they're gonna do everything via distance, but and I believe the Fire Department is planning on an in-person meeting, probably in the bays where everybody can maintain distance next month. As I had said, they're, they're planning on what's gonna happen, you know, for the Easter plant sale and trying to return some things to normal. On the Peter's house, Hebrew Historic Properties Commission. I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at the pictures that had it taken. And then I guess Michael Leary had also taken a bunch of pictures. But I think it's pretty impressive. And, you know, they, they have had to address a lot of other rot, which they have addressed successfully that had been covered up literally with trim back when that project first started off. And I'm not even sure how many years ago now, but all that's been addressed. So it's, it's coming. It's, hopefully you've had a chance to look at the pictures. And I think that's all I have.
I want to thank you for sharing those photos. I did look at them. They, it's quite impressive because I haven't been in there since a year now, I guess, because with COVID.
Yeah, you know, the floors are done. Right now, they're trying to pick out and get the actual lighting fixtures for the ceilings, for the walls. You know, the first floor, by and large, is done. Still need to put the fire alarm devices in. But outside of that, it's kind of ready to go. So it's, it's a nice project. It's been, you know, a lot, I have to thank, you know, John Menard for and, and his volunteers for just countless hours of, of work, putting, you know, that place to make it the showcase that it is. An incredible yeoman's work that he and others have done. So, okay. Do we have anything for public comment?
Dan, I just had one thing under liaison reports.
Yes, please.
For the WPCA, Kevin's not on here. The contractor that was awarded the bid sent over the contracts that the attorneys be reviewed. I sent out to the Board of Selectmen earlier in the week from our owner's rep. The layout of the next proposal, you'll be getting those every, either bi-weekly or, or even weekly as we get started. So I hope that helps.
Okay, isn't there also another committee that you are on that you're giving reports as a liaison?
It was the Ram Campus Improvements. That project's been completed. We're just closing it out.
Okay, and what's happening with the sixty-six, three sixteen intersection?
Okay, that's a project that was approved along with the Ram Campus, but that's going through the state of Connecticut. That's almost at the ninety percent design phase that the state requires, and then it'll go back to them for approval, then that'll go out to bid for a contractor to be awarded. That's, that's part of a grant.
Okay. Beautiful.
So Andy, thanks, thanks. It was, our, our owner's rep is, what's her name? Sarah Burg or something?
She's, she's new to us. We had a woman prior, but I believe you're right from environmental partners. I, I know her boss, but she just introduced herself new to this project. The woman that we were using moved on.
Great. So thank you. She seems really, she seems great. She can communicate on top of things.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you. We were scheduled for an executive session. I'm gonna turn it over to Gail to ask her pleasure on this.
It's nine twenty-eight. I feel that we need to postpone it because it's so late. But it's up to my colleagues. However, that's, that's my, my thought that we should not go forth because if you're only in half an hour, you're talking ten o'clock.
I don't think.
Excuse me?
I don't think you can get the opposition.
Okay.
Catch your bedtime, John, huh?
It actually is getting there, let me tell you.
Ten o'clock, man, I'm done. So, yeah, I would support Gail as well. I mean, if, I mean, she's done, you know, the work on this and if we're, it's late and we can't all be sharp and focused on it, then it's in the best interest of the topic that it be delayed until we can give it its full attention.
Okay, sounds fair. So we will forego the executive session for tonight. We'll just make sure it's on next, our next meeting agenda. Thank you all. Good night. Stay safe in this stupid three-day snowstorm.
I need to make a motion for us to adjourn at nine twenty-nine.
And I'm not gonna second it, right? We don't, we don't second.
I don't need to second it. Thank you all. Have a safe weekend.
Yeah, take care, everybody. Thank you.